This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's six o'clock. This is the Rome City Council meeting. We will now come to order. Would you have a quorum and start out with our invocation? That'll be Pastor Van Zant.
All right, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Father, thank for this day, and I thank President you bless us with. I'm certainly thankful for the wonderful weather. I pray that you'll please us to keep us safe during the thunderstorms that are coming this week, and I pray that you'll please us be with our first responders, especially pray that you'll please us put a hedge protection around them and just bring them home to their families safely. We're certainly thankful for our government here in the city of Rome, and I pray that you'll please us to be with these upcoming elections, be with our elected officials, and I pray that you'll please us allow them to represent the city of Rome and the patrons that are here. I pray that you'll please us allow us to be law-abiding citizens, but most importantly, I pray that you'll please us allow us to continue to just be those individuals that abide by the laws, and I pray that you'll please us allow us to do what we can to respect our first responders, but also our elected officials. Lord, I pray that you'll please have your hand upon this city in the coming days. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right. We'll go on to public comments. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda, or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary at citiesecretary@cityrome.com prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. The writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment. It should be given to a friend, family member, or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks, or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individuals shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. And that will give us you, Shayna Odom.
All right. First, we have Lisa Wilson by Joanne Wilson regarding elections, open records, and place four.
I am Joanne Wilson, reading this for Lisa Ann Wilson. Mayor and Lisa, I think we have to give her address still. Okay, 240 West First Street, Rome. And mayor and council, election time is almost here. I feel this political race is pivotal for the future of our city. Early voting begins April 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, and May 1 and 2. The election is May the 6th. This year, we are lucky. We can vote at the community center. That's right here, not that far for any of us. Please get out and make your voice heard and your vote count. In my humble opinion, we need a more transparent government with integrity, one that is more physically responsible to all our taxpayers. It is my belief we need a change, new blood, new ideas, new people with original thoughts and diversity. I feel we need open hardcore discussions among setting council and in a public forum. All members are not always in agreement with each other, but respect should be shown to all. We need elected officials that think outside the box, but at all times follow state laws and local ordinances. No one is above the law, and that may have happened in the past few months. Making choice that look out for all citizens, not just a select few. Please step out and vote to change the direction of our town, gear it toward fiscal responsibility with old-town charm while welcoming growth to our city. Secondly, what is the hurry to fill council seat place four tonight? Would not be better to allow the new council, whomever that may be, which will be appointed in less than 30 days to make this choice. After all, these people will have to work with each other. Are you all about transferring unity? What is the rush? And then lastly, why do citizens who ask for open records keep getting no responsive documents, or partial material, or material that does not apply to what was requested? Can this process be improved to help citizens get the documents that law belongs to the citizens?
Next, we have Joanne Wilson.
She's nice to me because I have...
Regarding open records and election.
I go, do what there? Okay, open records in the election. I have concerns, well, Joanne Wilson, 240 West First Room. Topics: Open records and election. Mayor and council, I have concerns relative to open record requests being returned with no responsive documents or incomplete information being provided. I know the law provides that a record is not required to be put together. That is not what I am referring to. For instance, in a previous council meetings, a request for individuals to submit their names for a facility committee was heard more than once. When I and I know one other individual submitted a request to be on the committee, we were immediately told that it was too late, that the council already had given the names they wanted to the administrator. Moved forward three or four weeks, and I submitted an open records request for the date the committee was established, their mission statement, and names of individuals on the committee. You guess what I got back? No responsive documents. I have an email from the administrator that says "too late," and that myself and the other person's name did not go to the council. You guys draw your own conclusion. I am also aware of instances of incomplete responses. That being said, if you want to see changes in your city, now is the time to vote to reclaim your city. Early voting and regular voting rates and times are on the webpage and have been provided tonight. There are four openings. Two have no competition. The other two each have opposition. I feel confident these four individuals can move our city in the right way. With your vote, we can see major change and fiscal responsibility, along with other challenges we have: water, wastewater, sewer, infrastructure, and facilities. A small list for this to be accomplished. Easy this year's voting. You just come right up here and cast your ballots. All right, and again, early, well, gosh, is that Monday? Okay, early voting begins Monday. Again, all the election is up here. Please make your presence known.
All right. Next, we have Ashley Majors regarding code enforcement.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ashley Majors, and I'm going to speak on code enforcement. All right. Thank you to Officer Grant for your diligent effort against code enforcement. Code compliance is not a retaliation against citizens of Rome. It is a way to clean up our town. Removing subsidized buildings only brings up the property values, and it is a way to make our beautiful community for, to bring in small businesses, developers, or even new neighbors. If you see your neighbor's grass too high, ask them if you need help mowing it. It takes the community to come together, not to bring them down. Maybe in the future, we can, we can make a program to help our elderly. Also, don't forget, we have Bolt Pickup on the first Tuesday of every month. Also, it could be an overzealous citizen back in, back in the past that took down a meth trailer or the dilapidated buildings to reach out, you know, to the landowners. If you're on the council that is leaving, maybe see what you can do. Purchase the, purchase the land, or even see what, bring in a small business. It's something that can help. But it was me to help clean up our town. So, I ask, you know, to board up the buildings, clean up the streets. It's a reflection of all of us. So, that is what something that I ask all of you and the citizens to help on the code of the ordinances, whatever your decision is tonight. Please go forward with that. And thank you again to Officer Grant. I know it is hard for the phone calls that you are receiving. I know it is very difficult. And it is not just from you writing the tickets. It's also from the neighbors calling and complaining. So, thank you. Also, to council for appointing member, the member for place four. If you are choosing that tonight, I ask that you choose someone that is not on social media complaining and starting the negative post that is out there, that could be taken down in the, that has been taken down. Excuse me. I don't like speaking in front of people. Also, to the number eight, so the smoking policy the mayor pro temp has put on here, whatever it might be, if it's smoking on any premises, please make the decision. If it is at City Hall, think about employees. Thank you.
And last, we have Deborah B. Kraft. Regarding the council appointment.
I'm Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. I am respectfully asking that the council postpone the appointment to seat four. Wouldn't it be better to let the new council fill the seat with someone they can all work with, no matter who that council turns out to be? What is the rush? The two senior council members will not even be in office any longer. If you insist on appointing someone, then please review the applications carefully, and choose someone who has not been on social media insulting the citizens or standing at the podium insulting the way people dress. Thank you.
That's the end of public comments. City council meeting, not until May 17th at 6:00 p.m. Also, early voting starts on Monday at 8:00 a.m. right here in this very location. And we'll go into consent agenda, minutes of city council, regular session dated March 23rd, 2023, and March 13th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? And we'll go to regular agenda. Number one, appointment of council member to place four, and that'll be city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. So, excuse me, on the agenda this evening, we do have the appointment to the seat that has been vacated by Mrs. Knitsky of Council is so inclined. You do have the five applicants that have applied. They're at your place. We also sent an email out asking them to appear tonight so that they could give a brief introduction and answer any questions that council may have relative to serving on this board. So, at this point, we could take them as staple together, and we could call them up and see. I think most of them are here, and then you can ask questions of them as we did when we filled the seat for Mr. Meehan.
All right. First, this Shirley Myers.
I'm sure. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Shirley Myers, and I'm a retired resident of Rome, Texas. I've lived in Rome for seven and a half years, and I have children, and a lot of grandchildren as well. As I'm learning more about the local government and how I can help make our community more resilient, livable, equitable, to better our city, I'm applying for the city council vacancy appointment place four. Progress and pride has always been my feeling about local happenings and preserving the vintage history. I am a team player, a planner. My positive committed to, for a better Rome. My value is extended to research steps to better, for a better result. Skills to negotiate patience, public safety, and law. Communication with citizens, department heads, and other involved governmental agencies would be one of my important concerns. I have been attending city council meetings for several years now to stay focused on city business. I currently host community events, community luncheons, and I voice city concerns of city movements to council. I hope to seek grant givers and other resources for water, sewage, and new business attractions to our city downtown for progress with future, with new ideas. Opportunity, opportunities don't happen. You create them. Moving to a city united we stand would be the position that we need to take today. Thank you for allowing me to personally induce myself, and I hope you all have a blessed day.
Yes. So, just like last time, I think we'll just ask questions as they come up. So, for whoever is appointed, you'll be on here for a year. So, you'll be facing a lot of things coming up. So, I've got some questions that are probably going to be on the future agenda. So, we'll start with number one. What are your top three priorities that you think this council needs to be working on, and why?
Well, I think it's water for one. We've got to have water resources, and I think that we've depleted that. I think we, we need to have our future, and it takes time to build. I know that, and I know that we have a lot of outside resources as far as building going on that we're supplying the water. So, I think that would be number one that we would need to work on as far as priorities. I think sewage, the West Side wastewater plant is in, in dear need to be upgraded. We, we have other businesses coming in or wanting to come in, and how are you going to supply sewage if, if you don't have that available or an upgraded resource for that? Thirdly, how to build our downtown area, our city, to get people interested in coming to Rome. I think it's very important that we have a storefront, basically, to be able to drive at, when somebody drives through, they see what we are about or what we look like. Right now, I consider our town as a drive-through town. We don't really have any, anything to offer them to stop and, and enjoy the moments here with, with our, our city, and I think that needs to be changed.
Thank you. So, you mentioned water. City staff has been tasked with investigating new water sources, and while some of them have been found, we are many years away from being able to use them. Yeah, we need to start looking at funding now that, as it will cost millions in infrastructure. How will you go about obtaining funding for this major project?
Well, funding's hard because it's not readily available for one. You have to go and research what is available out there. And I know that grants are readily available out there that we do not participate in or take part in. It will also create or cause, whether you're doing a bond, whether you're doing a loan, you have to research what's your best option in time, how much time you have out there, because it takes time for us to get there. We don't want to spend all our resources upfront. You've, you've got to space it out, basically. So, I would think that with, with the research and knowing, I mean, if you're checking with how other people are doing it, you don't have to recreate the will. I think you can get some good information or data from other people that have been doing this for quite some time. I've noticed Justin has just really caught on fire lately. They are, they've got so much development going on over there, so many projects. But anyway, they have a way to, to get their resources. But anyway, I think that we just need to research and ask a lot of questions and do our homework before we jump out there. I don't want to bankrupt our city, and I feel like sometimes we can overdo that if we're overspending or we're taking out too much resource loans or whatever. So, I think, I think in time, with the planning committee, I think you need a committee to help you determine what's needed or necessary. Not so much the council get out and find things. You need somebody that is working the, the, the beginning or the forefront of the process of the project and tell, come to the council and tell you what's available and where it can be directed, or where you can get that information, or that, that loan from, or that bond from, or that grant.
Recently, the Wise County Sheriff advised Rome that will be, they'll be charging us approximately $65,000 to use their dispatch to go forward to pay, make pay raises for their dispatchers. When we have some major priorities we still need to fund, what are your thoughts on this, and how would you suggest moving forward?
Well, I, I think as a partnership, them being, as far as we are being in the county of, in Wise County area, it's basically, it's a partnership, basically. Now, do we want to do it as far as to add on another debt or bill to our needs? I'm, I'm thinking that you can negotiate these fees with, with the county. Now, do we need to go get our own resources? My thought would be is, if you're going out to get other resources and the Wise County is already offering them to you, then I think you need to do your homework and understand what it's going to entail to move to another location to get what you need out of it. But I think that it may be a budget problem in a sense, but yet, that's not our problem. But yet, we cannot supply all other towns' resources either, and I think that we need to really look at how we're doing that part, too, because if we're not getting enough money by servicing these cities, then we're giving it away. So, I think it helps, partner-wise, we all need to talk. I mean, that's, that's part of being a community and being in the same house, basically. We are all here as a community, whether it's Wise County or it's Rome, Texas. So, I think, I think the communication needs to open up and, and, and see, I mean, do we need to go somewhere else and see, see how they do it? I don't know. But I, I really think in, in the research, I think we can find the better position for Rome if we're, if we get out there and do, and look.
Thank you. My final question. In the past, you've been very vocal in opposing city council members and/or the mayor, and potentially those who may be reelected or elected next month. How will you put that aside and work together with them for the best interest of Rome?
Well, I look at Rome as my home, and with it being my home, I look at it as, the question I always ask myself, is this, is this the best or the better for Rome? And in my position, I want Rome to be successful. I want Rome to be shining and really, really, really booming, you know, as, as a small town. We're not going to get very big. You know our size. So, we're not really going to grow much more than what we are unless we annex people in. So, we're, we're at the size that we're going to be with this, a few exceptions. There's going to be some changes where houses are changed into retail and that kind of thing. But I think my, my opinion and my thought is, I look at the best interest of Rome in, in my direction of how I would handle, whether it's a budget, whether it's this bill that we didn't know anything about, that we've got to figure out how we're going to pay it. But I, I, I think with, with what goes on with Rome here and, and people bickering or being negative back and forth, I don't think that is, is the recipe or the good medicine for Rome. I think we all need to say, we need to forget what's going on behind us in the past, and we need to live towards the future here. And I think, and, and my thought is, I want to do something good for Rome. When I do those events, if you see the smiles on those kids' faces, you get so much, you get so much out of that. I mean, it gives me the, the energy that I'm ready to do it again, you know, kind of thing. And yeah, it costs money. Yeah, it does. It's, nothing's free in this world today. But I think our town needs to mend. We need to figure out, and I pray for us every day. I do. I tell them, please heal us and make us want to work together and get it right. But I mean, I'm only one person, and I'm willing. So, anyway, hopefully I answered your question.
No, you did. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Anybody else? Am I trying?
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Next, we have Candace Fitch.
Hi, I'm Candace.
Hi, I'm Candice Fitch. We live at 155 School Road. We moved here about seven years ago at Shell Creek. And we had lived in the Metroplex. So going from the Metroplex to a little town of Rome was a big change for us. And it was really neat to see the difference of the closeness that you see that happens in small towns. You know, people's faces, and where they live. And it was an exciting time. And when the house came up right next door to the old school, I was ecstatic. I was like, this is where we need to be. And my husband, being the firefighter, I thought, gosh, you know, this is a whole new world, you know? Volunteer firefighters, small town. So we really wanted to see about coming in here and making our life here. We own a business here in Rome. It's a t-shirt company. So I deal with money every day. And so one of the things that I feel like I could bring to Rome is the help that, you know, budgets, learning how to HR, learning how to deal with people in my daily daily. Sometimes you don't like to do it. And that's okay. But we're here. You know, we live here together. And having us all together, we all have the same common thread, you know? We all want a happy life. And I feel like being here in Rome has made such a big difference in our life. So I really appreciate it. You guys have questions?
Sure. I've got the same questions for you. So what are your top three priorities that you think this council needs to be working on and why?
One thing that I noticed when my husband was at the fire station is the buildings, of course. One of the exciting things about living right next door to a historical building is the historical buildings. And, you know, I feel like we have lost that touch in Rome. There's nothing here that says this is Rome anymore. The flour mill's kind of gone. Hopefully, it's going to revive. But one of the things that we do need is us to come together and build that building right here. So we can have this building, it has solid bones. And so one of the things I would love to do is see that come alive. I think people would appreciate that. One of the other things is the water. Being a businessperson, I have to learn how to take money from one spot and put it into another. And some days, people don't like me when I have to move money from one spot to the other. I also know that they don't like it when I say you can't buy stuff today or, hey, I have money in the budget this week. You guys need that big machine. Let's work together and rally, make some more sales, which would be like sales for taxes, and be able to afford those things. So as a businessperson, I see the things that we can do where you slowly build, taking the money and the resources and not splurging on things, because you can't go anywhere with that. You take the money and you decide where it needs to go at that time. So that's one of the things I would see is, where can we find the money to fix things to make it better to go to the next step? Another thing is the downtown area. You know, I'd love to see the downtown area become successful. That's going to take a little bit of time. But right now, I think the main thing is getting the administration in the building that we own. Not that preventing, you know, we have the building. So I think that if we can find the places to put it in, we can make that building great.
Thank you. So you also mentioned water. Again, city staff's been tasked with investigating a new water source. We're many years away from being able to use it. Yet we got to start looking at funding because it's going to cost multi-millions of dollars for the infrastructure. How will you go about obtaining funding for this major project that we haven't already looked at?
So one of the things that I do know is about, Rolling V is coming in. And we can annex some of that and get some property tax. I know that property tax is going to take time, and annexing is going to take time. But I really feel like maybe we should do like a bond, you know? Take a low-interest bond and be able to get some of that money that we can use to fix things that need to be fixed. Bonds are not bad. You know, you're going to take money away from us. But really, if it's down to low interest, it's not going to hurt to be able to do something like that.
Thank you. Wise County Sheriff recently advised that they might start charging Rome around $65,000 to use their dispatch to go towards pay raises. When we have some major priorities we still need to fund here in the city, what are your thoughts on this and how would you suggest moving forward?
My son was a 911 dispatcher. So I know the importance of the dispatcher. My husband and both sons were firefighters. It's very important to have the dispatching. But when I was looking into it, they're already getting money. And I feel like if we gave them the $65,000, they're double dipping. I feel like they aren't using their resources, their resources correctly. So to me, I feel like we need to, you know, sit down and talk with them on why they're wanting to take the $65,000. Or how they think it is a different life. But I don't think that we should be able, I don't think that we should have to pay that. Is that, is that between you and them?
Thank you. Lastly, you've been very vocal in opposing city council members and/or mayor and potentially those who may be reelected or elected next month. How will you put that aside and work together with them for the best interest of Rome?
So that's another thing, you know, having my own business, being a boss is hard. It is. It's really hard. Sometimes you're not happy with that person, but that doesn't mean that you can't work with that person. I deal with people every day, between employees, people that we buy our stuff from, and then also people that buy from us. Sometimes they're not happy with us and sometimes they are. To me, I feel like I can voice my opinion and I want you to know my opinion, but that doesn't mean I don't like you. Sometimes people will think that I don't like them for a reason. No, but I will. I do want my voice heard. That doesn't mean I don't like you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Fitch.
Next, we have Danette Willis.
Maybe not. I'm not sure if she was able to come to the meeting this evening. We do have her application, though, in front of you that outlines some of her qualifications.
Next, we have Kristy King.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kristy King. I live at 207 Cheyenne Trail North in the Chisholm subdivision. We have lived there for 18 years. Together with my husband, we have raised our two daughters there. One of them is now attending law school in St. Louis, and the other is a freshman in high school. During that time, I have been serving in Northwest ISD. I have 29 years in education, and the last 20 of those have been in Northwest ISD at Roanoke Elementary, Hatfield Elementary, and Claire Love Elementary. So I'm very familiar with those small, what were once very small communities. As a public school educator and as a principal specifically, I have expertise in the areas of strategic planning, visioning, long-range planning, conflict resolution, and community engagement. I will be retiring at the end of this month. So woo-hoo, let's all cheer. And at the heart of a public school educator is service. And so I am looking for ways that I can fulfill that part of me that needs desperately to serve others. I have poured that into children, and now I'm excited about furthering my involvement in the Rome community. I have served on the planning and zoning. I think it's been about two, maybe two and a half years, somewhere after, during COVID, I started serving on that committee, but that's me.
Thank you. Same questions. What are your top three priorities that you think this council needs to be working on and why?
Having grown up in Northwest ISD, grown with Northwest ISD, fast growth is what I live and breathe daily, is what I think about all the time. The number of students, the number of changes, the number of new families coming in. And so I feel strongly about thinking about the growth that is coming to Rome. Infrastructure must be a priority. Facilities, whether that's renovating the current or finding ways to build new, and then providing a safe and inclusive community for everyone. And specifically, another thing that is on my heart is serving the seniors of our community. My father passed away in 2020. My parents, my mom and my stepfather now, have both been diagnosed with cancer. I've watched my dad. He lived with us. And right now, my mom's living with us. And I've watched, I've seen how we've had to struggle to find the resources to get him to doctor's appointments. How can he get to Domino's to play? So those kind of things are near and dear to my heart. So engaging seniors and everyone in our community is a priority for me. And I hope it would be for the council.
So city staff has been, again, tasked with investigating a new water source. Some have been found, but we're years away from being able to use it. Yet we need to start looking at funding now, as it's going to cost multi-millions in infrastructure. How will you go about obtaining funding for this major project that this council hasn't already tried?
I don't know. I don't know city water, right? I know schools and I know problem solving. So what I would do in working through that task, that challenge with the city, we do something at school called constraint thinking, where we say, well, we can if. We call it, it's a beautiful constraint. And we can do it if we make some kind of change or adjustment, or we collaborate with another entity. So asking a lot of questions, educating the public, tapping into what hopefully one day soon will be a commercial tax base, that's important. And then bonds and looking at other funding sources. But I would rely heavily on the lead of the city administrator and the guidance and collaboration of the council.
Wise County Sheriff recently advised that Rome, they may start charging us approximately $65,000 to use their dispatches. And that's going to go towards the pay raise for their dispatchers. When we have some major priorities, we still need to fund. What are your thoughts on this and how would you suggest moving forward?
Safety has to be a priority, right? People don't want to live in a place where they don't feel safe. However, I think it's important that we look at what's happening. How does the partnership between the police department, and I would ask that question because I don't know. And I'm comfortable saying what I don't know. I don't know how the police department collaborates and works complementary-wise with the sheriff's office. So I would, again, ask questions. So what does the schedule look like? How often do we rely on the sheriff's office as opposed to the police department? Could we look at that and develop a contract with them that could be mutually beneficial?
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
And next, we have Tommy Eason.
Good evening to all. My name is Tommy Eason. I have lived in Rome close to 10 years. When I first moved here, I went to the city secretary at the time and asked her what I could do for the city because I had some time on my hands and wanted to help. Angie Young proceeded to let me know that they were trying to put the park and recreation board back in place, and that might be a good fit for me with my experience as an event manager at Marriott. She also said that Marie Moore could use some help with the senior center to help her cook food, set up, and clean up. The next week, I started going to the senior lunches and fell in love with the senior citizens. They made me feel so welcome. From that day, I went every Friday to help Marie because of, but because of COVID and the health inspection board came in and said that the senior center was not up to code compliance, we had to shut it down. In the meantime, I also worked on the park and recreation board for three years and then became the chair for a total of seven years. When I first started being chair, I created the budget with the help from the mayor and then the city administrator. I helped with the creation of the Parks Master Plan. The Parks Master Plan Committee came to realize that within the next 10 years, we needed to have six more parks with the growth that was coming. So the Park and Recreation Board decided to try to get a $150,000 grant. But with that grant, we needed to match the money of $150,000. We asked for a bond to get our portion. This seemed obvious to us. Pass a bond for $150,000 and we would get $300,000. We were going to put a pocket park in Bywell. The board was excited to do something for Bywell area. Unfortunately, people didn't see the wisdom of the two-for-one deal on money, and the bond was turned down. We didn't get the grant money and the pocket park was not built. One of the reasons I would be good on this council is that I know what's going on in this town. We have issues with facilities, water, and wastewater, infrastructure, roads, financial management, and wildly different opinions on how to solve these problems. These are serious issues for serious people. No matter the results of the upcoming election, I am committed to work with the rest of the council. I have been at most every council meeting since May of 2015. If not in person, then by video. I have given many presentations to help with addressing some of the issues. When I don't understand something, I ask questions. I'm always interested in learning more about the issues and different points of view. I have always wanted what's best for this city. I was the builder of my own home, and I am not going anywhere. This is my forever home. I want to see Rome prosper and for it to be a city everyone can be proud to call home. I see serving on this council is the next step in my service for Rome. I hope you agree. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. The three things that I would want to work on would be, of course, the water and wastewater, the sewer. That needs to be fixed. There's people that complain on Facebook that their water's brown or this or that. We really need to do something about that. Another thing is the facilities. I know past councils have tried to do a facility, and unfortunately, that didn't go through. But we need to find a place that is safe and not rodent all over the place for our people that work for us. We need to help them. Those were three. The water. Okay. What's the next question?
So we're investigating a new water source, many years away from being able to use it. Yet we need to start looking at funding now, as it's going to cost multi-millions in infrastructure. How will you go about obtaining funding for this major project that this council hasn't already tried?
With something this big, you really, if you can't get grants, and I've understood that the councils in the past have really tried to get grants in all different kinds. And they haven't been successful because, unfortunately, some of us make too much money or some people make too much money. So they don't do grants for people that are this high in the money. So what I would do is I would try to get a bond. That, when the city needs something that big, you can't just do it in pieces. It has to be done at one time so that everything gets done.
So the county sheriff has advised-
Okay, I got it. I don't want you to have to read it. Okay, with the sheriff thing, I'm sorry. The way I look at it is the county is going to get all the taxes from the Rolling V as they keep getting bigger. They need to turn around and take that money and put it towards their dispatchers. That should not be something that this city or any city should have to do.
Lastly, you've been very vocal in opposing city council members and/or mayor and potentially those who may be reelected or elected next month. How will you put that aside and work together with them for the best interest of Rome?
Well, all I really care about is what's best for Rome. So I am very vocal, but-
So I, I am very vocal, but I'm asking questions most of the time. I want to know answers to questions that I have. And the people get upset and I'm sitting there going, I'm not attacking. There's no way I'm attacking. I'm just wanting to know what your thought is or what this is. And I'll just listen and take into advisement everything that's been said.
Thank you. So council, as you will recall, the last time we appointed, you did take a short recess into executive session that's available to you. Our city attorney is not in person at the meeting, but he can be on the phone if you have any questions for him. It's simply your choice in which direction would you like to take.
Do y'all want to take a moment and go in the back?
It's 6:51, the council will convene into executive session. Don't go away.
This conference will now be recorded-
From executive session into regular session. I guess we're going to need a motion.
So first off, I just want to say thank you to everybody that stepped up and applied for the open position. It's one thing to sit there and talk about doing something, but it's another thing to actually step up and want to be a part of something to make the change. For whoever is not selected tonight, I would highly suggest to reach out to our city administrators. We do have other positions to fill on different committees and parks and rec and whatnot. So if you do want to be involved, there are other opportunities, so please do that. I know we made this, or I've made this statement before and I think some people have had concerns. As for appointing someone before an election, in the past with many presidents, Trump, Obama, many others, Supreme Court has upheld that they're still in office, they still have business to do. Whether they're on their way out or not, they still have a right to conduct business. So that's what we're doing, we're keeping business rolling. With that, I would like to make a motion to appoint Christie King to place four on the city council.
Second?
I'll second.
And all in favor? All right, Mrs. King, thank you. Welcome. You got to come up here and swear to Shayna. Don't swear at her, just swear with her.
I, Christie King, do solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or promised to any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. I, Christie King, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member placed for City of Rome of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, Mrs. King. All right, regular agenda will go on to addresses printing on the agenda for public speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the items that council asked staff to check into and bring back. We had some, people make some inquiries as to whether that was a requirement or was just something that had been kind of in our format in the past. And as I mentioned in the agenda memo, it is not a requirement that we print the addresses into the minutes itself. What a lot of cities will do is if you list the name, you list the high points of what they discussed and then you can send them back to the recording if it's available to hear exactly what was said by each person. What we cannot do though is waive the requirement that they state their address for the record. So we will still do that, but we can take it off the agenda if that is, or excuse me, off the minutes if that's council's direction.
I think since they're already recorded and they're stating it while they're speaking, I have no issue with taking that off the agenda.
Same. Just direction. So that was your first one, Ms. King, that one was easy. All right, the next item, Mayor, is the technology infrastructure update. We do, I believe, have one of our consultants from Fulcrum, are you in the audience? Want to come up, join us, sir? Ryan Young, our normal person had a conflict with this evening. And so what we've asked them to do is provide some information to council as it relates to our technology throughout the city that staff are using. We have made some strides in the past year or so since hiring their firm. They're doing an excellent job of keeping track of each device that we own, how old it is, repairing the server, making everything kind of talk well together and providing some security on the backend for the internet and other structures that we have. So I'm going to kick it over to you, sir, and we will assist as necessary.
I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again?
I am David Johnson, one of the owners of Fulcrum Group.
Very good, thank you.
Well, thanks for having me to here today. Really, we just want to talk about three things that need to be done to advance the IT environment. We've got a server that is very critical for operations, it's currently out of warranty. So that needs to have a warranty renewal applied to it. We typically recommend that you keep any critical infrastructure like that under warranty. So if there's a failure, you don't have a large expense outside of your budget that's unplanned. The second item is the upgrade of your firewalls. Currently, the firewalls for City Hall, police and fire are not CEGIS compliant. So that's a big no-no, we need to, we need to get that resolved and fixed. So we've got new firewalls proposed. And then the final thing that we have is eliminating the generic logins for various roles within the organization, city administrator, city secretary, mayor, et cetera. Typically, we would prefer that you use your actual name as your credentials as people come and go from those roles. Somebody outside your organization may have those contacts in their phone. There could be confusion as email communications are going on, so we recommend getting that cleaned up. So we'll have to create new account names and help users migrate all of those things. So those are the three things that are most critical at the moment.
So Mr. Johnson, what is the cost of those?
Let's see, it looks like a little less than $12,000 total.
Council, this is an item that we did not have budgeted in this fiscal year, but in talking with our representative that comes out on a quarterly basis, he has stressed the concerns of this, of these issues, if you will. We did recently replace one of the servers because it went down and we would not have a backup. So much like the pump that we had at one of the wells, we went ahead and replaced those because if it goes down, we're not working until it is back up. And we may lose quite a bit of data in that particular realm. So trying to get some direction from you all as to where you may or may want to go with technology. As we proceed through the budget process this year, I will bring more of a comprehensive look, but these were three critical issues that we're facing currently.
The CEGIS issue is that could we be fined if they find out?
I believe the major issue, you'd lose access to the federal FBI databases. So I think that would be a significant impact to your police department.
With these updates to the firewalls and whatnot, would that better protect us from some of these spam emails and whatnot that many of us will be getting?
It doesn't necessarily protect against that, but it protects against other things. Like if a user goes out on the internet, clicks on a file to download it, we would actually scan that file in the cloud, check it for viruses, malware and then block it if necessary. So you don't have any of those protections today.
I will say that small cities are very highly sought-after target for people with phishing emails and other things who attempt to spoof an email from the mayor. And they will say, you know, this is Mayor so-and-so, I need you to transfer several hundred thousand dollars for this particular project into this account. I've talked with the developer. And in small cities, that often occurs because they don't know, the staff don't know. So that's something that I'd like to see us work towards implementing. I do think the generic email addresses that Mr. Johnson was speaking to don't necessarily lend themselves to a secure environment from talking to Ryan about that particular issue. So we would have to transition all of everyone to a more specific email, usually first initial last name at City of Rome or something to that effect, so.
And actually, the good news is you'll still be able to use those email addresses for incoming mail. So somebody would be able to email you at city administrator, but when you send an outgoing email, it would have your name on it, so.
Direction on spending $12,000 to upgrade our technology.
The $12,000 that we don't have, is that what?
No, no, I didn't say we don't have it. I said we didn't budget it.
Okay.
That's, that's the difference.
I mean, I feel like this is critical, so I feel like that we do need to do these things.
Correct, but I only have budget authority for what was approved. So any alteration to that I need to bring forward for you all to review. And this would be one of those items.
So are you going to make a suggestion where you're going to find that $12,000?
Out of general fund, just, we do have some money back in general fund, that is for a rainy day, if you will, or for unexpected expenditures, and that's where the money would come from.
Well, I will tell you that since I'm leaving, you can say everything I want to. But, you know, we had a different address system prior to what we're using now. And, but we got hacked so many times that we moved to the system that we have now. I bet I get that phishing stuff on the old one because I still have it. You know, and have to keep all of my emails and, you know, records and all that. I bet I get 10 of those a week. It's never ending, that older address.
That's something that we would work to eliminate as we go along. There are different filter you can put on that we don't necessarily have at this moment, but we need to, we need to work into that.
Well, that's just an example of what we're trying to protect ourselves from.
I have one quick question, does this include training or is this just to protect us?
As part of, as part of your actual contract, we do have annual training for all of your staff available. So we just need to get you guys to complete that, that's available. We update it every year and it is CEGIS compliant as well.
I don't anticipate a lot with this as much as just the changeover in the email and how we work that. That's the biggest piece.
Do we need a motion for the budget?
We'll bring it back at a mid-year budget adjustment. My question is, you do at this city what are generally referred to as minute orders? So you give the city administrator direction through the minutes and then I pursue that and bring it back.
I think you have the direction you need.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Not a problem.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, let's move on. Number four, code enforcement direction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the items that was talked about by Mrs. Majors when she was up at the podium earlier today. As well as I have fielded phone calls from residents concerned about parking on the street and what is allowable and what isn't, and what is done necessarily in one part of the city may be different than another part of the city. I've also talked with the code enforcement officer. Sid is here with us this evening in case you have any questions. We are heading into prime mowing season and cities generally take different approaches on code enforcement. And being new in this position and kind of coming into this growing season, I need some direction from council as to how vehement do they want us to enforce codes? And do you want us to take a look at any code cleanup as it relates to this? I listed several on your agenda at the bottom. We have codes that reflect substandard buildings, parking on the street or other public property. We actually have some for offensive odors. We have some for excessive noise, junked or abandoned vehicles. I've also fielded some phone calls from some people that on the, one is it relates to excessive noise, that code could probably be a little tighter. It's a very broad language, so we'd need to work with carbon on what that may look like. But Sid, would you mind giving them just a brief overview of how you conduct the work you're doing and how you come about code enforcement more as a compliance issue and less as an enforcement issue?
So when I was asked to do this a year and a half ago, we discussed it and we took the position that we wanted to not have a heavy hand. And our philosophy has been, generally speaking, those that are unsightly things, all weeds, which I'll define for you, the state says 12 inches. It's because the city ordinance we adopted comes straight from the state, 12 inches. And basically, the way we handle is when it gets to that point, we send a letter. And the way our ordinance is adopted is that you get one letter a year, first season. And that gives you 10 days to correct it. After those 10 days, if it still hadn't been mowed, then the city has to hire somebody to mow it. And they charge the property owner. And then if the property owner doesn't pay that, then the city goes after them. And that's behind the scenes, that's, I don't deal with that. But we have some, and that's probably the biggest thing that we deal with, that we get a lot of calls. And it's unsightly driving in the city when you see grass that's as tall as this. And it's a little difficult getting a hold of some because there's a lot of properties in town that haven't been developed. And there's a lot of landlords out there that honestly don't care. And so it makes it difficult. And that's the biggest thing I think for us is finding somebody to handle that as a contractor. But what I can say is, we field emails or phone calls and we go, we try to work with the residents. We have such a minimal rate of citations that we've only issued citations on one occasion. Because we try to give people the time to work. Even if we ask them for 10 days, if it goes a little over, we work with them, as long as they're willing to work with us. When they just don't talk to us, then we have to take a different matter. But I think we've had a lot of compliance. And I've noticed that this year, as opposed to last year starting, that people are responding quicker than they did last year. So we've taken that, trying to work with the citizens more than just finding. And I think it's worked.
Officer Grant, do you, do you have a plan that you go by? Or do you just kind of random, when you're out driving around, you just say, oh, that person's violating? Do you do any of that?
While I'm patrolling, I look, I'll be honest, when March rolls around, I kind of wince a little bit. Because when the first rains come, the grass comes quickly. And so it takes, it takes quite a bit of time to, to look at it, to take pictures of it, to document it, write up a base synopsis of what we're doing, follow through with all that. But the other things that we deal with, there have been several properties over the last year where there have been dozens of cars that have been abandoned on property. We've worked with them and removed those. And every single one of them worked voluntarily with us. And some of them took a couple, three months to get done, but they got done. But most of it has come from either a citizen emailing or calling or I've gone to some citizen's house, you know, and when I go to talk to the person- or I've gone to some citizen's house, you know, and when I'm, I go to talk to the person that's in violation, they say, well, what about this one over here? So that's pretty much where we've gone with most of our complaints, except for the grass. The grass, it, it really becomes a health issue because of rodents. So that, that one I stayed mostly on top of, but we still field calls about the grass.
Oh, I don't have any questions for y'all, sir, but just a couple of thoughts on this, this topic is, code enforcement, normally we wouldn't have a police officer doing this. We just don't have a code enforcement officer at this time. So one, I think when it comes to ordinance updates, that should be, you know, the council's decision based on staff recommendation. But as far as enforcing the codes, I think that should be mostly on the staff, either the code enforcement officer and their supervisor, whoever it may be at that time. Because if we're going to come back to council every time, how do you want us to take care of this? This is all we're going to be doing. So what I would like to see is, I know there are some recommendations on updating some of the codes, and I'm okay with that, but as far as enforcing them, I would like to authorize staff to kind of do that with their discretion, based on what the ordinances are.
I also think that, that that's the appropriate step, as well as educating the public on what the code enforcements are. So maybe some type of communication campaign to get the word out.
We can certainly do that. That's, that's something that we can certainly add to the website, use social media. In the past, I have mailed postcards out to people, especially in the community I used to work for. Golf carts were a big issue. So we can take that step. I would like to clean up some of this code a little bit. Some of it hasn't been updated recently, and then bring it back to council for review and approval. And then I really appreciate the way Officer Grant has gone about his duties. He's very compassionate with the people that he does talk to, often going well beyond what others would have done to gain compliance, and he has the heart of the city foremost in everything he does. He told me about a particular house that the neighbor behind was complaining about the smell out of the house, and so he was able to track down the owner in another city and have a face-to-face conversation with them, and he gained compliance that way. But that's the kind of work ethic and the kind of output that we're looking for in staff, and he does an excellent job with his role.
Especially being a full-time police officer on top of that, so. Awesome job, thank you, thank you. So do you need a motion at this time, or just direction on bringing back some of these ordinances to update? You can work with Chief Debus, who's the direct supervisor. We ever get a code enforcement officer on charge, all under your supervision, and y'all can discuss enforcement at that time.
Yes, we can do that. I'll need to get with the city attorney to make sure that we are in compliance on all of those ordinance revisions for that, but we can bring it back sometime later on. It's not going to be immediate. It takes a little while to get this vote turned, but I will certainly hope, hope to have this finished in the next 60 days.
All right, let's go to number five, ordinance revisions follow-up.
Thank you, ma'am. This is one of the items that we had on the agenda the last time, and I hadn't had a chance to speak directly with our city attorney. We had emailed back and forth, but both of our schedules just didn't align well. So I'm bringing this forward for conversation today, and we have an ordinance. If we can get some sort of direction from you all, we can bring it back under Old Business before the swearing-in on the next agenda. Currently, your ordinances as it relates to some staffing issues are not, they're not written and reflected in the way that you all have been operating. So the City Administrator position reports to the entirety of the board. I'm accountable to all six of you, now that we have a sixth person. And so I changed one of those items in your agenda memo, you will see, that says that, it used to say that the City Administrator was under the direct supervision of the mayor and shall exercise powers and duties as delegated by the mayor to manage and operate the government of the city. So the wording change would be, that the City Administrator, under the direct supervision of the governing body, shall exercise powers and duties as delegated by the City Council. I will tell you, I have talked to the city attorney, Carvin, we can call him if you have questions for him as well. He is listening online. He has stated that this wording is in compliance, so there's not really a legal issue with this change. It's just a reflection of what we're actually doing on a day-to-day basis. The other change would be as it relates to, how would we term that? City officers and department heads. It currently is worded just a little bit differently than what the local government code says. Our code of ordinance says, "Department heads as designated in Section 9.01.003 may be disciplined by the mayor for any negligence, carelessness, or other violation of duty, et cetera, et cetera." The code actually reads that the mayor shall inspect the conduct of the department heads and city officers. So I reworded this to align exactly with the local government code, 22.042. These are the two, only two cleanups that I've had a chance to speak to the city attorney about, so these are the only two that are in front of you this evening. Any questions? Looking for direction as to whether council's interested in changing any of this. If they are, we would bring it back on the 17th for final review and approval. I just finished my conversation with the city attorney yesterday, so this information is not in your packet with the new ordinance, the way that it's drafted.
Okay, that, we were looking for it, that's.
You don't have that yet, because we were just finishing up our discussion yesterday.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that that's, that sounds appropriate, as long, I, I don't know why it was the way it was, if there was a certain way, I don't know the history of it, but it doesn't.
When the ordinances were probably originally done, the city officers are put forward by your ordinances themselves. So it's the city attorney, the city secretary, the city administrator, which you did not used to have that position. And I think there's one other, a fourth that I would need to check on. But, oh, the municipal judge, that's your, your four city officers. So I think just as the code has evolved, that wasn't cleaned up in the language. So just in taking a look at some of this and talking to the city attorney about some other things we were cleaning up with the personnel handbook, this goes hand in hand with that particular agenda item.
I think that it should be changed, yeah, to follow the local government code.
So we can, we can get the ordinance put on the agenda for approval. I can send it out to you all before the 17th, so you have a chance to actually read this document. Just, I just didn't get it in here, because we had back-to-back meetings from last week to this week, and things got compressed. Okay.
Number six, personnel handbook update.
Thank you, Mayor. That is similar to the same conversation we just had on ordinance revisions. One of the things that I looked at in your personnel manual as I was onboarding here, there's some language that could be cleaned up. Some of it is frankly a little punitive in nature and not as welcoming as I would like to see for city employees. The draft that I did send you under separate cover, because again, I was finishing some conversations with the city attorney, and I don't expect this to be finished this evening, just to set clear expectations. You will see on one of the pages, I put a welcome letter from the city administrator that would help, I think, onboard new individuals as they come in. You will also see on some of the pages, like page seven and eight, there are some just general changes to the wording to make it a little easier for everyone to read. It seemed to circle back on itself a little bit and had quite a few words that probably weren't necessary for us to actually use and incorporate it. One of the other big changes that I have in here that I have not finished, that, excuse me, that I have finished talking to the city attorney about is, you had several references in this document as well to the mayor needing to sign off on things such as time cards and turn in things if they had a conviction for a crime, et cetera, et cetera, which is not really your practice administratively. This was probably as well-developed when you did not have a city administrator's position. And so this, that change basically is replacing the word mayor on some of these. And if you look on page 13, excuse me, just as an example, this is a section on harassment and discrimination that you must report the incident verbally or in writing to your supervisor, and it did say, or the mayor. Now it says, or the city administrator. For the day-to-day workings, that would be the normal place that they would go, especially as the city administrator is the HR director as well. The other items that I've put in comments for you all to look at, as it related to things like a personal search and seizure of city staff's cell phones and computers, I don't really find that in anyone else's personnel handbook. It has been brought to my attention that that's not, not that city staff would do something terrible, but it should be narrowed, in my opinion, to things that have to do with city business. Because the way it's worded, it's as if, if I bring my cellphone into the office, if you all have reasonable cause, you can search it for whatever it is that you need, even though the city doesn't pay or furnish me with this phone. Now, of course, your city phone, absolutely, your city computer, yes. There is no expectation of privacy to any of your city-issue devices, your city vehicle, your desk, et cetera, et cetera. But your own personal items, I would ask you all to consider rewording that just a little bit.
Yeah, I believe there's probably case law on that. I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that they can do that.
Well, there is no.
That should be, but, but, you know, I mean, that's a matter of their privacy. And these days, a phone isn't just a phone. For many people, it's also a computer. They could have medical records on there, you know, whatever, but, you know, banking records. And that's none of the city's business, you know, and I really think that their personal cellphone should be off limits.
So that's something that I talked to our city attorney about, and he said that we could reword that, that there is definitely, for any city employee, it doesn't matter what city you're at, there's no expectation of privacy in the workplace, and I believe that pretty much extends to businesses as well. But it can be worded better, so that it doesn't appear to be quite so broad on both of those. The other issue that I asked him to check on is the idea of weapons in the buildings. A lot of the law has changed as it relates to either open or concealed carry, and he said he could certainly take a look at that and reword it for us. He said we are in compliance, but it is rather direct language, and so we could word that just a little bit differently as well. So basically, all I'm looking for from you all is, do these make sense to you? Would this be something that you would want us to pursue, knowing that we're not going to finish this this evening? And I would work with the city attorney to address those two points, two or three points, because the cellphone and the computers are in two different spots, and then the weaponry could be reworded. One thing, you don't want to, semi-off topic, anyplace the municipal court is, it is protected. You cannot have a weapon in that building. However, this room, when it is not being used for municipal court, does not fall under that heading. So we would need to just change the language slightly. And so I'm looking to see if you all would like me to pursue that or not.
Yeah, get it updated.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be updated.
Thank you.
Well, actually, we're moving right through this.
I see that.
She sent me a note earlier. She said, "This meeting may go longer than desired. Would you like to take a break?" No, let's move. All right, let's go to next. The seven, Wise County Sheriff dispatch fee update.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned to you all before, the, the mayors have gone through regional meetings. They've had their second one as of April the 15th. Chief Debus and I attended, as well as Mayor Mitchell, Mrs. Mize, and Mrs. Beecraft were also there. So we had a nice accoutrement of folks that were representing Rome. But I wanted to bring back to you some of the items that were discussed and give you an update on where this stands at the moment. So they discussed the fact that we had put together two letters, two drafts of a letter that they would send to the county judge, asking to be put on that agenda to discuss that $65,000 fee. The two letters, we are still not in agreement on, and I think it was determined that that would be tabled. And Mayor, you can refresh my memory if I missed anything, that that would be tabled until the sheriff came to speak at the meeting in Boyd on April the 27th. The mayors will then meet again on the 29th, that, so they meet on Thursdays. They would meet on Saturday and determine if they had come to any resolution with the sheriff on any of this, and if they had not, they have already asked to be placed on the May meeting for the County Commissioners Court to discuss this issue. Yes, ma'am? Do you have a question? Miss Ty, I thought you, saw you reaching.
I, well, I did have a question about, have you had a chance to research any other avenues? Or is this just?
I'll get, yeah, that's, that's coming. So that was just the general, first topic of conversation that was discussed in that particular plan. The representatives from the city of Boyd, because it was hosted there in Boyd, they brought up the data comparison, that there were some concerns on whether the data was actually comparing to like data sets. And so they had the presentation that we had here in Rome, and they questioned whether the data could be standardized to reflect that it's more consistent, because they do not believe that the city of Rome exceeds the number of calls for service that the city of Decatur and the city of Bridgeport have. They're much larger cities, and I'm not sure how those numbers are being calculated. It was discussed whether it was each click of the mic, meaning an officer may check out on a call, and it's two, two of you on this council or officer, you know this well, and you may have five clicks of the mic before you finally finish with a stop. Or does Decatur and Bridgeport only track that as per call? And so that's a little misleading, and they would like to have some cleanup of the data. They did discuss if dispatch with the sheriff wasn't a good economic or customer service option. As I mentioned to you all at our March meeting, that's something that we'll need a solution on soon. We cannot wait until August, July to move this forward, because we will need time to negotiate those inter-local agreements and get the technology in place so that on October 1, we're prepared. Because I, I don't know what the sheriff will have discussed between our meeting and the one in Boyd, but we will call, I asked him the question of what happens on October 1st, if we don't remit the fee, and he had not made the decision yet whether we would still have dispatch services after October 1, so we need to be prepared in that regard. As to your question, Mrs. Ty, yes, we could contract with the city of Decatur or possibly the city of Bridgeport. We have done some very preliminary conversations with the city of Decatur just to get some sort of an idea what this may cost, both with initial startup and then as we move along in this program, so that we can give you that analysis for council to make the decision. One of the things that was discussed at that meeting was that there may be a repeater that is needed that would potentially go on the Rome Water Tower or could go on a cell tower in Aurora, which would allow for the signal from Decatur to come to the repeater and make it out to Boyd. One of the things that was discussed in detail was that they believe this repeater upgrade is newer technology than what is being used at the sheriff's office, and therefore it would eliminate some of the dead spots that we currently have in Rome, because we have beautiful topography of the city. It just causes not only issues with water and sewer, but issues with radio contact as well. I'm sure Chief can add to this as we go along, if you have any other questions.
I believe, just real quick, a point on the dead spot. That was one of the issues that we had with the police involved shooting of Sergeant Ritchie, I believe, partially because it was a dead spot, he couldn't call for backup, is that correct?
I've been told that. I was not here then. I think Chief could answer that question maybe a little bit better.
But again, the repeater here locally would, you said, cover all the dead spots, so we wouldn't have any.
That's what we anticipate, yes. We'd have to do a little more research.
It should cover Aurora and Boyd.
Newark.
Newark, New Fairview.
Any of those, because one of the other conversations that they have had is, how do we regionalize, potentially firing EMS as well as police, depending upon how this southern part of Wise County continues to grow? And so they are trying to keep those options open.
So as far as radio technology goes, we did upgrade our handhelds and mobiles, thanks to you guys on the council that gave us that budget. Last year, the issue is with the infrastructure that sends those signals across the county is owned and maintained by the county. Right now, they use, and I'm not a technology expert, but I believe they use microwaves where a repeater would shore up the areas that we do not get out and do have dead spots. This isn't unique to Rome. I was in a city quite a bit larger than this and had quite a bit of infrastructure and money to do those things, and we still had issues with radios there. So this isn't something that's unique to Rome. Sergeant Ritchie did have issues getting out with portables during his officer-involved shooting. We believe that at least where we are now, if we did upgrade with a repeater and share that cost with the city of Boyd, that would eliminate a lot of those spots.
Have y'all researched the Tarrant County 911 district at all?
We're very preliminary in this. We have a few other leads to turn over, but the delay from the sheriff discussing it here in, in Rome and then going to Boyd 30 days later is, it's a delay. And I And I don't know what he will come back with in Boyd. Um, so we're kind of waiting to see what, what the further discussions are with that city.
I think everything's on the table.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the, if, you know, you're researching beforehand, and then once y'all go to that meeting, then you can go, "Okay, I'm going to go with Wise County."
But we still need to remain good partners with the sheriff's office.
I understand that, but you can still research the other stuff.
Absolutely. Yeah, everything's on the table.
So far, we've met with Wise County. Um, I've got a good relationship with Sheriff Aiken. And we both agree it's a business decision, uh, what's best for the officers and deputies, what's best for our citizens with, uh, the budget we're given. And then we will just compare the vendor opportunities. The two, um, preliminary proposals are much different. So it's going to be something we, we really need to think through, uh, and really consult with the officers and, and my command staff on what they believe is best, and then have you guys make the final decision.
Any questions on that component? Because there's still another component of that conversation from Saturday. Okay, so one of the other things that, that they discussed at the first meeting and, and went into a little more conversation about last Saturday was the funds that are already being sent to the county. And I've heard some of the people who applied for council discuss that here this evening. As I have reported to you all before, the city of Rome and every city in Wise County sends a half a cent of sales tax to the county for, best we can tell, property tax reduction. There have been different themes that have been discussed. If it's for debt, if it's for infrastructure, if it's for property tax reduction. And best we can tell, because this was originally passed in 1990, that that is what that is for. So basically, what it does is it subsidizes the ad valorem rate, and it drives that down. So you're getting it through two different revenue sources. One is your ad valorem rate, which is your property tax, as you commonly understand that. The other one is sales and use that you pay at QT and any of these other, the loves, et cetera. So you take that half cent and you send it to the county, which helps to keep the taxes low throughout the county. Well, that is something that probably was a great thing in its time. But as the cities have continued to grow and all, a majority of the sales and use is concentrated within the cities, we are now exporting wealth to the county and sending money to folks who live out in just the unincorporated portion by keeping their tax rate low. I will say Wise County does have a very low tax rate, when I did the research. So the city of Boyd, um, if I understood them correctly, is very interested in putting something on a November referendum to allow citizens to vote on retaining that half-cent sales tax within their own cities for either infrastructure upgrades or whatever their needs may be. We have several communities in specifically Southern Wise County that struggle for revenue. Um, that half cent to us would mean approximately $300,000 to $400,000 a year at our current sales and use tax rate, best I can calculate at this moment. I don't see a line item in the county's budget specifically for city of Rome's sales and use, or Boyd, or Bridgeport, or any of those. I haven't found it yet, so I don't know if it's just a single line item, because the county budget is a page after page of line items. So that's a question that I would like to have some more information on. But they would like to try to educate the residents of the cities so that they understand how their sales and use tax money is being used and potentially retain that within each city for use and benefit of the residents of the city. So it would cause county taxes to go up, but it would cause county taxes to go up on everyone in Wise County that owns a home. Not just, as it is now, that sales and use is concentrated out of the businesses in the city districts. And it's not as equitable as I would like it to be for Rome. So, um, the other thing they discussed was a municipal development district, which is something I believe that the mayor has discussed before as an option. You can take one of those other half cents that we have. So generally, Rome and their sales and use, they have a full cent that goes into general fund, which is for maintenance and operations and just general day-to-day bills. You have a half a cent that goes to the county, and you have a half a cent that is in property tax reduction. If we move the property tax reduction into something like a crime control district, which many of you may have heard of in other larger cities, or in a municipal development district, or some other special type of district, you can take that half cent and direct it towards some of the things that you would want to see done at the park. That's something that Boyd uses theirs for. They use it to, um, host some of their events. They have given some money. They've used it for community block grants for cities along their main thoroughfare on 114 and a variety of other things. So you, as council, have a greater ability to direct that through appointed boards for municipal development district. That would also take city approval. The residents would have to vote for that. And we'd need to do a lot more research before we made that request of the citizens. But it's something that this and future councils ought to consider as it relates to maximizing the financial position of Rome and making sure that we're being good stewards of the funds that we're getting.
I had a good question on the Decatur-Bridgeport. Would that be a, have we got a number figure or a money amount versus what the sheriff's charging us?
As of the numbers we have today, over three years, it could save us approximately $50,000, Chief. Is that what you ran? Preliminary. So we don't have-
Really? I, I, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll ask my question. Because I thought during that meeting, I didn't remember them saying anything about Rome's cost. They said Boyd's cost would be 40.
Well, I, I think what Chief's talking about is the 65. I think what we don't know is if the sheriff, as we've discussed before and as he stated here, he's willing to negotiate that fee. I don't know what that looks like. Um, so if he negotiates his fee down, I don't know what the savings will be. And that's why I need some hard numbers to work with.
Well, I guess, I do understand, believe me, keeping that relationship with the sheriff is very important. Bringing that repeater out here would not just serve our city, it would serve a bunch of cities. And we don't have to have that worry that we have an officer involved trying to get out on the radio. It's a big officer safety thing. So I think garnering those relationships with the cities right next to us is just as equally important as garnering that relationship with the sheriff, as much as that having, bringing that equipment and everything out here is very crucial for officer safety and basically our public service.
So the main cities that were at the meeting last Saturday were representatives from Boyd, Aurora, uh, plus two council members from Aurora, Paradise, New Fairview, and Rome. And in the past, we've had people, at the first meeting, we had the mayor and the city manager from Bridgeport. So there is a lot of interest in regionalization and how we can help share those funds across Southern Wise County for the benefit of the residents. Because as we all know, you've got to pace the commercial and the residential. You don't want it offset where it's all being carried by residential. We need that to really shift this direction. But we also have to expand that tax base, because then we can lessen the cost of services as they continue to go. And we can do some great things in this city with that, those funds. So, um, the other thing I would say to you all is, if you haven't looked at our website recently, I've put a ton of financial information out there as it relates to what bonds are, why cities issue them, what our financial position is, what our current, um, credit score, if you will, is, and how much debt we currently have. So go look at the website, take a peek at that stuff. We will continue to develop and evolve that, not only with financials, but other things as we go along.
I feel like that I would like to do the referendum also in November. I mean, if, if other people are even interested in it.
I think it'd have to be a county, it's going to be a county, I think.
That's what I don't quite understand yet. I, I think the mayor is correct. It has to go out to all in the county, and it would take a considerable amount of education, because taxes are hard to understand. I work in this business, and it, I still have to relearn some things every year. But I will say that Boyd seems committed. If it doesn't pass the first time, they will go again. Because they are definitely preparing for the future, and they are addressing their infrastructure. Because they conveyed, they have a 664 home development that's underway, and they have developers coming to them still yet on another housing development in that area. And I can tell you all, I have talked to no less than three different folks seriously about developing in the city just this week. And I have talked to some business owners about their concerns in the city and some things they would like to see done differently, which we desperately have to get the commercial here, desperately.
And as far as my understanding is, the other cities are on board. If we are going with Decatur as dispatch, they're are, they are equally, I guess, splitting the cost with us.
There would be some cost sharing for the infrastructure itself, um, like the repeater. But again, it's still very early in those stages. So we would continue to have those discussions. We can reach out to Tarrant County 911 and see if any of that's an option. And then you can make the decision from there.
I have a question. So when, when Sheriff was here, uh, well, first of all, I just have to say that it's our responsibility, as far as, uh, city council and, and you, to do our homework. Due diligence is part of what we must do as a council. And so all these different financial options, we really have to explore. Uh, and, and I appreciate the work, and it's, it's complicated with this many players in the mix. But the other thing that, you know, when the sheriff was here, I like the sheriff, you know? And, and that's a political statement, but I, I do like him. And, and I felt a little bit sorry for him in that, the county is getting, if anybody didn't read that in the messenger, uh, they had a, uh, access, uh, excess of $3.2 million when they did their audit on, uh, 2022. And so now, as we look at the new assessments on real estate and our development, our new developments are not in the city. They're in the county. And so that money, those new assessments, are going to go to the county. And so I, I'm sure that there was a lot going on and a lot of information. But I did mention to the sheriff, "Go to the county and ask them, hey, they're getting the money here." And, uh, to show him what, what he should be able to develop a new budget that, that helps him with these costs. There's growth, there's inflation. He's having trouble keeping his staff, probably because of paying enough salary and, and, uh, those kinds of things. And so he needs to develop a really detailed, uh, budget that he can take then to the county for, so that they can develop their budget. But I said, we should, we would go with him, you know, to support him and, and help say that, um, you know, he has all these challenges, but it's for the betterment of the county. It's for the betterment of all of us that are going through this growth. And that it seems only fair, since they're getting the money from these things, to help that become a reality. And so I just want to s- say that if, if it comes to that and meeting with the council, I want to be supportive of him and his needs. I don't want it just to be, "Well, if we don't deal with the, uh, dispatching fee and all that kind of stuff." He still has needs, and we still are relying on each other for safety. And, uh, so I just don't want that to get lost in what we're doing here.
So a while back, you sent us an email with two different letters. I think, uh, the mayor's asked you to draft one, and then you sent one that the mayor drafted also. Can you explain, um, why they asked you to draft that? If we're waiting for the Boyd meeting, or why there's two different letters?
Well, I think, I don't know that I can speak for them, but the first letter was taken off of the notes that I had from the meeting itself. Um, it was a little bit longer in content. And, um, there's some disagreement on exactly how it should be worded. So at this point, they're going to wait until that meeting on the 27th to determine how that will be worded and what they're going to do with it, and if they're even going to send it at all. Because I will say that the mayor from Boyd has already requested to be put on the agenda for the commissioners' court meeting and has specified the topic that they would like to talk about.
That was the whole point of the letter to begin with?
Correct.
Was getting us on the agenda.
Correct.
Because I imagine that the sheriff's going to present the same presentation to Boyd that he did to us, just with, you know, their numbers. So knowing the players over there, I don't think that they're going to be changing their minds on, on that.
They seem pretty committed to going a different direction, but I don't want to speak for them.
Right. So I guess, are you looking for a direction tonight?
This is simply an update to council, because this is a regional meeting. They will also, um, meet again, as I said, on the 29th, and we can bring you an update after that.
So we can put this on, to finish up on old business at the next meeting? To provide direction?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Number eight, the smoking policy. That'll be, um, Josh McKay.
Thank you. Um, I know in our handbook, there, there's already smoking policies or whatnot. And I understand employees and everybody have their own things that they do. Uh, but many cities, uh, schools, everybody else, they, they kind of going away from smoking or dipping or, or pins or whatever it happens to be. So, um, I just wanted to take a look at, uh, not necessarily banning smoking on city property, but maybe at least pushing it to, what is it, 50 feet from any entrance or exit? And I say that because I've had a couple of people that approached me trying to either come to or leave, uh, city council meetings and having to walk through a cloud of smoke. I know some people have health issues. Some people just don't like the smell of smoke, or they don't want to walk through it. Uh, so I think we just need to keep, you know, all the residents in mind and, and their health concerns as well. So, uh, I don't know if this is something that we could put up to staff, because we have different buildings, different exits and entrances to look at, or if we just want to put a blanket, no smoking on city property, but then we've got to think about employees and breaks. Uh, so I just wanted to bring this up for discussion to see what y'all's concerns or thoughts were on it.
Well, now, in this building, right when I first, first came, there was a receptacle. I guess is the word we can use. I think it was a big can, actually. And it was over here on this side of the building. I don't think it's there. And, uh, so that kept people from coming in and out the door. They didn't have to come through a valve. But because we moved it over that direction. So maybe that's some of the discussion that we need to have. Don't know where that can land.
Maybe a designated smoking area.
So I will tell you, I have a considerable amount of experience with this. One of my previous cities went down this exact path. And where they landed, um, they banned smoking in many, many spots, but they also put a 25-foot perimeter from the door and/or a designated smoking area if you could not accomplish 25 feet. So it's really, if this is a matter of you looking to, curtail this in city facilities, we can certainly put designated smoking areas and bring forward an ordinance that supports that, that if you're in or near a city building, you will smoke in that designated area. I would really caution you not to ban it for city staff, because I think that is something that many enjoy, and I don't want to lose them.
I think this city is so small that, I mean, you could probably, if somebody was standing out in front of the door, just say, "Hey, do you mind going around the corner?" Or, I mean, I don't know that-
Most smokers are pretty considerate.
Yeah, I, I don't know that-
I smoke, but I don't, I'm a closet smoker. I don't smoke in my car, you know?
I don't, I, I just don't know if we need a whole ordinance on it, because of right now. I don't know, but I mean-
But if you tell somebody, that bothers me. But, you know, "Don't go away. Don't move away from me."
That's what I'm saying. We don't have to change everything, but maybe just appoint a designated smoking area.
We could certainly put something around this corner here in this building, because you can't really go this way for the fire service. We can do that. Um, I think at City Hall, they do a great job keeping that away and going on their breaks.
They sit there like they're on the back, right?
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, I, as long as we can, you know, make it a little bit healthier for the people coming in and out of here.
Okay, next up is Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation. That's also city administrator.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is something that we are very pleased to bring to council for, uh, review and notice, that we have an excellence municipal clerk in our midst with Ms. Shayna. She has done a great job, not municipal court clerk, municipal clerk. So there, there's a little bit of that difference. And the state recognizes and puts aside sometimes weeks as it relates to Public Service Week. They also designate a Municipal Clerk Week. They have a Municipal Court Clerk's Week. And the municipal clerk, which is your city secretaries, And the municipal clerk, which is your city secretaries, that week is coming up on the thirtieth of April through the sixth of May. So we have a proclamation for the mayor to sign that we will put in Shayna's, um, personnel file. If you all would like to read it or mayor, if you'd like to read it, we can certainly do that. Well, let's take that up with the state, but that's a good point. So this is the fifty-fourth annual professional municipal clerks week. And it says, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the fairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participat- through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore I, Patricia Mitchell, mayor of Rome, Texas, do recognize the eighth of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three as professional municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Ms. Shayna Odom, and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Alright, I'll tell you, we wouldn't get by without her. I'll tell you that.
I motion to approve Shayna week.
I like it. Put it on the calendar. Thank you ma'am.
Uh, we got another executive session. It's eight oh four. We will go into executive session on that. Let me read it real quick. Uh, personnel, uh, five five one point zero seven four personnel discuss appointment. Uh, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee or hear complaint or charge against officer or employee in executive session unless officer or employee requests a public hearing. City secretary, utility billing permit clerk, and city administration, uh, evaluation. And again, it's eight oh four. Actually, it's eight oh five now for executive session. Okay. You know what, Mrs. Wilson? Let's go to McDonald's tonight. This conference will now be recorded. We're gonna have two motions. Who's gonna make a motion on, uh, raises?
I make a motion to improve the utility billing and permit clerk position by ten percent.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the second one, six percent?
Motion to authorize city administrator to prepare a contract with the city secretary to include a six percent pay increase with additional four percent upon, uh, course completion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, they're good. Alright, um-
I also have a statement I would like to make coming from executive session. When we take the oath of office for council or mayor, we are swearing that we will uphold and carry out the decisions of this council regardless of political or personal thoughts or beliefs. As long as these decisions are legal and in the best interest of the city, it is a duty of the mayor to ensure they work with the city administrator to carry out these actions based on the direction and decisions of the vote of the council, whether the mayor agrees or not. Per the contract with the city administrator, she has afforded a professional review at the hundred and twenty days from the date she started. It was laid out in last week's executive session, the process that would be taking place to perform this review and no objections were stated at that time. Upon the deadline of Tuesday, April eighteenth, when it was agreed that all reviews would be submitted for council review prior to tonight's executive session. An official review of the city administrator, the mayor did in writing, object to the review stating, and I quote, communications with you do not provide a sufficient basis of a comprehensive review at this time, end quote. And when asked, uh, for, uh, information on this, it stated because she did not know the day-to-day duties of the city administrator. Now whether the mayor agrees with the review or not, for political reasons, personal reasons, or any other reasoning, she or he may have, we must abide by official contracts or the city runs the risk of being in breach of a contract and subject to possible legal actions. So let it be known that the official review was conducted by the council members minus place for as they were appointed tonight and that the mayor did in fact refuse to provide an official review agreed upon by the council per said contract.
The mayor said she did not have enough information to complete the, the evaluation that you apparently had provided. And that's where we are.
You said you do not know the day-to-day operations of the city administrator.
You know, you're almost out of here. Let's not fight, please. I have tried since I started to try to get along with you, but everything I've done, you've turned it around. But let's leave it alone. We're out of here.
Breach of contract.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, we're gone. Eight fifty-one. Very good. Thank you.